Okay, at this time, I'll call the meeting to order. And if everybody would stand, we're going to have the invocation, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and also the Texas Pledge. Mr. Hart will do the invocation.
Lord, we just thank you for the privilege of coming here together tonight. Lord, we just thank you for your presence. We just ask for your wisdom, your guidance in the decisions and the deliberations that are done tonight by the council. Lord, just watch over and bless them in the work that they're doing. Lord, we rejoice tonight in the presence of Mr. Johnson, for his service in the community in the past, and for the reverence and recognition to him tonight. We just ask that you just be with him, with his family, through this portion of the ceremony. Lord, we just thank you for your goodness. Just in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one city, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. At this time, it's a pleasure for me to be able to read this proclamation for Mr. Johnny Johnson. Again, Johnny, I can only say, when I told people you were going to have the proclamation, look at the crowd you draw. So after 100 years, you still draw a big crowd. But anyhow, honoring former Mayor Johnny Johnson on his 100th birthday. Whereas Johnny Johnson was born June 23, 1921, in Cleveland, Texas; and whereas Johnny Johnson has been a longtime member of the Lake Dallas Methodist Church; and whereas Johnny Johnson built his home in Corinth after retiring from the Dallas Ford Motor Company after 30 years of service; and whereas Johnny Johnson was elected and served as mayor of Corinth from April 1982 through April 1983, during which time the city experienced early years of growth with the Fairview subdivision, established speed limits on I-35 frontage road, and adopted construction standards that set forth by the Texas Department of Health; and whereas Johnny Johnson celebrated his 100th birthday on June 23, 2021, in the city of Corinth; and whereas the city of Corinth recognizes Johnny Johnson for his longevity for life and for his lifelong commitment to family, friends, and community. Now therefore, I, Bill Heidemann, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Corinth, Texas, and the city council, would like to celebrate this day, and to wish Johnny a fantastic and memorable birthday. Signed, the first day of July 2021. Want to come up here, Johnny? If you'd like to appreciate it, come right up here. We're going to get your picture on the front page. How's that?
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
I understand the picture, but I can't understand what you're saying. Want to say a few words?
Be very short.
Right here. Just get right on the speaker, right here. Then the people all over can hear you.
I could understand better this whole program if I could hear as well as you can hear me, because I don't hear anymore. So, thank you for asking me. It's been a pleasure. The association I've had with the city has been a pleasure in the past, and that's great. I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Mrs. Wiley?
Yes, sir.
Shay?
There's no one online.
Is there anybody online?
No one is here to ask a question.
Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Should the mayor or a council member desire discussion of any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second?
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Mr. Garber?
Yes, sir, I voted. It said that it accepted my vote.
Okay.
But I see my name is not green.
Right. Okay.
It's allowing me to do it again, so hold on one second.
There it goes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Business agenda. Consider and act upon the alternative compliance application for tree preservation for single-family residential lots on plus or minus .587 acres located at 2502 Oak Bluff Drive in the Bluffs of Pinella Point subdivision. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to have our planner, Mel Miguel of Inklund, to come forward and lay out this item for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Miguel Inklund. I'm a planner here with the city of Corinth, and I bring before you a residential tree This is located in the Bluffs of Pinella Point, which is in the southern part of the city. You can see the very northern end of Lewisville Lake, right here. This is a corner lot. It's about .59 acres. It's a platted but undeveloped, single-family lot. The purpose is to build a single-family residence. We previously approved an understory unprotected tree removal in March of 2021, so that the applicant could, you know, have a field survey and see where to site the home. And in May 2021, a required grading plan was approved. As you can see, this lot is heavily treed, and they also have challenges with topography in this site. As prior past practice for undeveloped single-family lots, this application falls under that practice where trees in certain areas were exempt, including right-of-way, utility easements, driveways, and the building footprint plus a five-foot buffer. Under this practice, I now have the totals right now, but the vast majority of the trees on the site proposed to be removed would be exempt from replacement. As you saw, the lot is heavily treed, so there would be a 50% additional reduction and mitigation as part of what's allowed in our UDC. The applicant's requesting approval. They'll want to remove 51 protected trees for a total of 484 caliper inches. As I mentioned just earlier, there's an exemption of 332, plus the reduction of 50% due to the heavily-treed lot, so it results in a total of just 76 caliper inches to be mitigated. Two trees on the site will be preserved, which is only 17 caliper inches. The applicant is indicating there is insufficient land to replant the replacement tree, so they're requesting the fee-in lieu of replacement option for the 76 caliper inches. This is the tree protection and removal exhibit. Everything that you see marked in blue falls within the exempt areas, and everything in red falls outside of the exempt areas. You will see two lonely trees over here on the northwest corner of the lot being preserved, and I'll touch on that shortly. But you can tell, you know, the lot is heavily treed, and the grading makes it impossible really to save pretty much anything else on that site. Staff recommends reducing the fee schedule rate from the customary $150 per caliper inch to $70 per caliper inch, which would result in a total payment of $5,320. This has been done for all other single-family residential tree preservation applications that you have seen in the past few months. Staff would also request the flexibility to administratively address additional tree removal, as may be required during the construction phase, with the same cost of $70 per caliper inch. We know they're only preserving two trees, but if for any reason they're gone, we would like to address them administratively and not bring them before you. And it's important to note that those trees that are remaining are separate from the landscaping regulations, which require 14 caliper inches of new trees. So aside from those two trees, the applicant will be required to plant 14 caliper inches worth of shade and ornamental trees, and those would be addressed during the building permit process. Staff recommends approval of the alternative compliance application as presented, authorizing the removal of protected trees, granting the recommended exemptions, and the fee in lieu of replacement option to be paid as outlined in the staff report, the accompanying preservation plan, and the worksheet. And we included the motion. Any questions?
Are there any questions from council?
Just curious, how big is that house?
7,800? 7,800 square feet.
It looked huge.
Yes, and let me go back if I could. See if I can. Let me just see how the slides. Right there. Right, so, yeah, it pretty much is within the established setbacks of the home. And again, there's a pretty large setback along the front. It's a corner lot, so it has two front setbacks, so that also is an additional limitation as to where they can place their home, but it will be a pretty large residence.
Okay, thank you.
Won't have to cut grass.
Yeah? Or pick up leaves.
Are there any other questions from council?
No, sir.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the alternative compliance application as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. Item number five, consider and act on a resolution for the appointment of one member to the Board of Managers of the Denco Area 911 District. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an item that you see every other year, and this year there were four nominees for the one position. You had made a nomination of Mark Klingel, and so we would recommend that you cast the city's vote for Mr. Klingel as part of the resolution or within the context of the resolution, and then that would be submitted to the Denco 911 Board.
Okay. I entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve, supporting Mark Klingel to the Denco Area 911 Board of Managers.
Second?
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Mr. Hart, I believe we have to go back into executive session before we...
No, we can go ahead and do these four items.
We can do these four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And on these items, I'd like to have George Marshall to come lay them out for you. He's going to go through all four items to explain those, and then you'll need to take four different motions for consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, really? Okay. I thought we were going to take one motion, but no? Then my presentation's going to be wrong.
Our attorney has advised us against that.
Sorry about that.
Do you have one omnibus motion prepared in your presentation?
You can tell me if it's good enough. Probably not.
Will there be golf carts allowed at the...
No, no, no golf carts today. Thank you very much. Well, I'm actually going to make this very brief. You guys are aware of the Commons at Agora. You know, we're trying to do something spectacular out there, and of course, with that, there's design contracts that we have to do. At the end of the day, the way we decided to approach this was having the landscape architecture company and the architecture company, and then the civil engineer work together as a group, but they're going to be three separate contracts, because it just didn't make sense to have it all combined into one giant contract and having everybody report to one firm versus, you know, just reporting to the city. So, at the end of the day, you know, TBG was the group that performed the Commons at Agora master plan, and their proposed contract, design contract, is $394,400. Jones and Carter, they already have a contract with us for the streets and roads around the park, and so this would be a contract amendment in the amount of $393,240, which will set their total contract price of $921,690. And then lastly, the Archetaxis, they're going to be doing the architecture design of the amphitheater, and then also the bathroom, not the bath house, but the bathroom and the building for the pump house, for the fountains and so forth. And then we will be also laying out the footprint of the future STOWA building or whatever it might be, just, you know, fleshing out some ideas on that. And so they actually were the same firm that worked with TBG on that master plan as well, and so their contract would be $346,960. And so this is my basic motion, if you wanted to... So we can take it separately. Do you want... Bob, did you want me to go through the CMAR, because it's a different... You want me to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead and do that.
All right. So, CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk. So, we went through a formal RFQ process on this. We advertised May 11 and May 18. We had a non-mandatory pre-submitting meeting on May 18. We actually also issued an addendum on May 18 based on questions that arose out of the bid process. We opened the proposals on June 3. We received four proposals, Hillen Wilkinson, Burn, Sedalco, and the Fane Group. The proposals were ranked based on questions in the packet, and based on that information, purchasing ranked those based on that criteria. And we then decided to have interviews on June 14 and 15 with Hillen Wilkinson, Sedalco, and Burn Construction. At the end of the day, so you'll see some numbers there. There's pre-construction services. That's everything moving up to a guaranteed maximum price, really. And so when you look at the numbers, and then in the bid, we told them to estimate that the overall project was going to be about $5 million, and so that's where you see the general conditions is, you know, $599,981. And you also have the $5 million times the, like, the 3.95 or what have you. And so at the end of the day, Burn Construction is going to give us the best value, but also they ranked the highest in our ranking format. So, we'll note that some of the, you know, at least one person of their staff was actually working for Sedalco when we did the public safety building, and so the staff already has a relationship with that person as well, so that's a benefit to us. Be glad to answer any questions you guys might have.
Are there any questions from council?
I do. You have to excuse my ignorance. What is a construction manager?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. So essentially, what we're doing is we're hiring the general contractor for the park. They will be with us through the duration of the design phase. They will be part of our design team with Archetaxis, TBG, and Jones Carter. They will be then taking all the information, once we get construction documents, they will then publicly bid them and manage that process and have open paperwork and, you know, financials and so forth with the city. And then they will give us a guaranteed maximum price at a certain time in the process, whether that's 90% or 95% set of plans or what have you. And then from there, there'll be usually a little bit of a contingency in that, but then at that point in time, you will be able to take action on whether or not you want to move forward with that guaranteed maximum price. And so it allows us to do a little bit of back and forth during the design process, during like a 30, 60, and a 90 design set of plans, where they can give us good pricing and help us make sure we're value-engineering the project, that we can still afford the park at the end of the day when we design it. Does that make sense? Okay. So they're going to also help basically to be the general project manager. And I know it was mentioned in work session that during the interviews and so forth, a lot of, I think, all three firms that we interviewed talked about, you know, why don't you do the CMAR for all of it, the streets and all the stuff around it? Because they could see the economies of scale with that. However, legally, purchasing, you know, research that, and we can't do that. However, that doesn't stop them from bidding on those projects when we do have it advertised for bid. One would think that they might have a pretty good, you know, idea of how all that would work together. So during the construction of that project, we're going to have the roads and all the utilities, this project, and hopefully the multifamily tract, so that will all open roughly around the same time. I should have put it in the slides, and I apologize. Our timeframe, we're hoping to design from, starting now, up to roughly January or so, and then hopefully start breaking ground, doing some dirt work in March of next year, and then with the goal to open the park and the streets in March of 2023.
Hey, George, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, will they oversee the entire construction project?
Yes.
So from start to finish, as far as the park and the portion that the city is going to be, that the city's going to be doing, they're going to be essentially providing oversight for that whole process?
Absolutely. Yeah, so they'll be the main point of contact. They will be providing us the maintenance bonds, the performance bonds, directly through them. So, yeah, it's...
So that 610 is for overseeing the construction of the entire park and of the streets and the infrastructure, you said? Yes or no?
Not the streets and the infrastructure, no. That's separate. That would be a separate contract.
Okay.
So there are pre-construction services. The work up until we get to a guaranteed maximum price is $7,500. The construction services fee of 3.5%, so if the project ends up being, you know, $5 million, then it's 3.5% times $5 million. And then the general conditions, we basically listed out, you know, assuming it's a 12-month construction timeframe, all of the types of items that we would need, project management, you know, construction trailer mobilization, that kind of stuff. And that's where that came up to $428,431.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so if you add the $428, plus the $7,500, plus the 3.5 times $5 million, that's where you get the 610.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay. Let's go back to item six. I'd entertain a motion on item number six.
Mayor, I would move that we approve a contract with Archetaxis for architectural design of the Commons at Agora in the amount of $346,960, and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number seven. I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move that we approve a contract amendment, approve contract amendment number one with Jones Carter to add the engineering site design of the Commons at Agora in the amount of $393,240 for a total contract price of $921,000... I'm sorry, $921,690 for the design of the streets and parks, civil infrastructure, and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents.
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. I'd entertain a motion on item number eight.
I'll make a motion that we approve a contract with TBG Partners for the architectural design of the Commons at Agora in the amount of $394,400, and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents.
Second?
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number nine.
Mayor, I would move that we approve a contract with Burn Construction Services for a construction manager at risk for the Commons at Agora for pre-construction services in the amount of $7,500, a construction services fee of 3.5%. General conditions amount of $428,431 for a total proposal of $610,931, and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documents.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay. Council comments and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and or comments to fellow council members, the public, and or staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Garber?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Henderson?
Nothing, sir.
Mrs. Pickens?
Nothing. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Three items here, very quickly. One is, Kelly and Scott, I handed out the books for y'all to read called "High Conflict", and I'll get those books to you next week for that, and I thought we could read that and have some discussions on that over the next month or so. On the COVID report, we have one employee that's out with COVID at the current time, so that's kind of the status there. And then, of course, Saturday is the parade, and so, Mayor, I think you're set up with the convertible.
Yep.
And I think we're going to have you, Steve, and Tina is a maybe, yes, in the car, with you driving.
Okay.
And then I'm going to drive the vehicle for the Lake City's focus.
Okay.
So we'll have that present. So we'll... And it's the same, I understand you're not attending, right?
You're correct.
Okay. I didn't want to leave you out there. And then Scott, I know you'll be out as well. Kelly, and also figuring on you being Saturday, being there Saturday if you're feeling well.
Yes, I will be there if I'm feeling better.
Okay. And so you'd be in the convertible with the mayor. That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we'll have to go back into executive session to cover Section 551.072 and 551.087. So at this time, it's at 7:28, we're going into...
from Tech dot for right-of-way being taken by Tech dot.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Wiley, call and roll.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Pickens?
It's unanimous.
Yeah. Pretty, you're pretty confident.
Wow. That's a little... All right. With that, with that, we're adjourned.
Kelly, I think you missed a career opportunity in announcing sporting events.
I know. I know. It's awful.